Eighth grader at Alma Del Mar. I'm here tonight with some of my classmates in an effort to get everyone, our families, our neighbors, our teachers, our friends, more informed about the candidates who are running for the New Bedford City Council. The general election is less than three weeks away on Tuesday, November 5th, and it will involve voters in New Bedford making some very important decisions. Decisions that will impact New Bedford, our city, our home, our future. My friends and I are old enough to vote yet. We are old enough to know what's going well and what isn't. We know that some neighborhoods aren't very safe, and we know either a family member or friend's family member or neighbor could be addicted to drugs, or homeless, or both. We also know that some kids in New Bedford aren't reaching their full potential in school. Again, we are not old enough to vote, but many of you are. That's why we're here tonight, to make sure you are informed registered voters. That's right, you have to be registered too. We have forms over here in English and in Spanish for you to fill out. Tonight is the deadline for you to register to vote in time for the general election. But don't worry, we'll get these forms over to City Hall in time. Now I'm going to hand them over to Jamil, who is going to share how about how this forum will work. Thank you.
Hello, hello, my name is Jamil and I'm a seventh grader at Alma. This is the first time that Alma has hosted a event like this, and we're excited to be a part of it. We're also so grateful to see so many of you here tonight, taking a part in this important democratic process. We invited all candidates who are running for either an at-large or war- or warranty on the New Bedford City Council to participate in this forum. In a moment, each candidate will be given one minute to introduce themselves and share why they are running. We have, we have a timer which will go off at the one minute mark to alert a candidate that their time is up. We ask that all candidates be respectful of the timer and other candidates. Please wrap up your response as soon as the timer sounds. In addition, we ask that no one interrupts a candidate while they are speaking or uses inappropriate or disrespectful language. This is a family-friendly event. Members of the general public were asked to submit questions online tonight for tonight's event. Many of these questions will be asked tonight. Alma Del Mar's Honor Council, a group of seventh and eighth graders here at Alma, also got to submit a few questions from the youth's perspective. We will ask ten questions tonight, and in trust of time and fairness, we would like each candidate to have a chance to answer four questions in total. You may decide which four questions you will answer by raising your hand when a question, when a question is asked that you would like to answer. However, if you raise your hand after answering your four ques- your four questions, priority will be given to the candidates who have not yet answered their four allotted questions. Thank you again to all of you for taking, for taking the time to show up tonight. We hope you find the information shared with you to be helpful in making your decisions before the general election on November 5th. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joslyn, and I'm an eighth grader at Alma Del Mar. We want to give a special thanks, thank you to Nelson Comfort Lofts at Domino's for donating the pizza and bottle of water for everyone to enjoy tonight. We made this contribution in honor of Marty Exquires, an incredible woman, advocate and friend who our community said goodbye to this past week. We also want to thank Tristan Michael Savage at U.S. Party Company for donating the patriotic balloon display. I would like to invite each candidate to now take one minute to introduce themselves starting now with Mr. Marky and working our way back through the candidates, then over to the at-large candidates.
Hi, I'm Brad Markey. I am the Councilor of Ward One, and I'm seeking reelection. Two years ago, I was fortunate enough to get elected. My first time in politics, I always wanted to get more involved in the city. My youngest daughter went off to school, so we kind of had an empty nest there and gave it some, an opportunity to run. I've really enjoyed it. The last two years have went by in a blink. I've learned a lot. I've learned how the city operates, what it does, what it can't do. I have a good relationship with my colleagues on the council. We really work together, put initiatives forth, to do things for the communities of city in general to better everybody's life. I've learned a lot, worked, especially with the department heads in different departments, trying to get things done, working with my constituents in Ward One. And I want to take that, what I've learned, that knowledge, put it forward so I can continue doing it with the experience that I gained for the residents of Ward One in the city of New Bedford. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. I'm Melissa Costa, and I am running for Ward One City Council. Two years ago, I also ran for Ward One City Council and came in rather close. But I took the last two years to really refocus and to find out what's been going on in the city of New Bedford. I've had the opportunity for the last two years to be riding along with the New Bedford Police Department, so I'm out there four nights a week, riding around, as well as my full-time position with the Department of Mental Health, where I'm working with New Bedford's youth. I've also coached what's called the Torch Foundation, which is a teen adolescent empowerment leadership program. And we do have another one coming up soon, so I invite all of our thirteen-plus age students to enroll in that program. I've been involved in a number endeavors, whether it's the YWCA, I'm a board member for that, whose mission is eliminating racism and empowering women. I'm on the Great New Bedford Suicide Prevention Coalition, whose mission is to help save lives by forming a network. I have also been involved with the CCIT, which is a Community Crisis Intervention Team, which is a community collaboration that comes together once a month for putting crisis interventions together. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Giesta, and I am the Ward Two Counselor. Luckily, I do not have any opposition, so it's just going to be me on the ballot. But it's still very important that everyone please come out and vote. We are very lucky that we live in a country that we do have that right. Too many people have died for that, and it's very important. It was very disheartening to see that only nine percent of the electorate here in New Bedford came out during the preliminary. So I ask you to please come out on Tuesday, November 5th, and do your duty, and vote. Not only for me, but the colleagues that I serve with on the city council. I think we have a very good group of people who are representing us in the city, but we also have a very good group of people who are running. And it's great that we're giving everybody an opportunity to talk about the issues that are important not only to the residents of the city, but in the area in general. So thank you very much again for being here tonight. Congratulations to the young men and women that are participating here. It's always nice to see that. So thank you very much. And again, remember to vote for me, Maria Giesta, on Tuesday, November 5th, and also for everyone else that you will listen to tonight. So thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. My name is Hugh Dunn. I'm the Ward Three City Counselor. It's been an honor over the past several years to serve Ward Three and the city as well. I went to UMass Law at Dartmouth to serve the public, and I've done just that since I graduated and becoming a lawyer in 2013. In my day job at UMass Dartmouth, I served as the Director of Economic Development and the Director of the South Coast Development Partnership. That job helps me work to bring new and exciting jobs into this region, like supporting offshore wind industry, but also working to support our existing industries, like our commercial fishing industry. During my time as a counselor, I'm proud to report that I played a key role in passing many different pieces of city legislation, from improving public safety and reducing crime, again, to attracting new jobs and businesses through the Blue Economy Project with UMass, to increasing funding for our public schools, to supporting our city employees and helping them achieve their core functions in public safety, especially with our police and fire, which is why the police and the fire employees of New Bedford are supporting me. I've also been a vocal advocate for much-needed infrastructure improvements in my ward. Our, our city is just a string of neighborhoods, and when one isn't getting fair attention, we need to really focus on it, and I've been doing that. I will also continue to demand the timely delivery of state services that every resident needs and is owed. So while we've had many successes in this first several years, I'm asking for your support going forward so that we can continue this good work. I'm asking for your vote on Tuesday, November 5th. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Gila Rock. I live in Ward Three, and I ask for you to vote for me in Ward Three. When Hugh graduated in 2013, I had already been serving this community for twelve years. I've had my business in downtown New Bedford for eighteen years. I represent indigent clients, probably close to three to four thousand at this point, of our residents in the city. I know the opioid epidemic. I've seen it. I see it with my clients every day. I've lost two this year after sitting with them and saying, hey, you're going to be released. You better not use, and if you do, be careful to die. You see them one day, you don't see them the next. That's my reality, and that's what I want to change. I have the connections with the New Bedford District Court. I have connections with the Veterans Association. I have the VA on, on my phone to get veterans help. I know how to get people help. I'm forty-eight years old. I'm a pilot. I own a small airplane in the city. I invest in this city. I'm having a fundraiser for Ward Three in Ward Three, not outside the city limits, in Ward Three. It's going to be at Wonder Bowl next Thursday. I think that's important because it's going to showcase different parts of our ward. In the next ten years, I intend to invest forty-five thousand dollars in this city. That's if taxes don't go up. That's a reality that taxpayers have the burden to deal with. So just think about that. We want someone in city government that pays taxes, that has a house, and that has a long stay in the city. And I ask that you vote for me on November 5th. Thank you.
My name is Derek Baptiste. I'm running for Ward Four, City Council. For twenty years, dealing with the youth of this city is refreshing to see young people involved in what we do. Because you mean a lot, and your voices are going to be heard for years to come. I've run the New Bedford Hoops Organization for about fifteen years. We've done summer leagues. We've done leaders in training camp. Where we do camps for kids, we teach them about domestic violence. We teach them about social justice. We teach them about economics. We teach them about yoga. We teach them about life. And I just feel like running for Ward Four, there's so much more that I can give to my community, whether it's the businesses downtown, whether it's the people of poverty, whether it's the people with drug problems, whether it's the, your home, or your taxes. I'm running for the people because I'm one of the people, and I take on my. Thank you. Vote for me.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Jojo Fords. I've been a lifelong resident of New Bedford. And through my public service as a former ward counselor and also leadership in nonprofits and civil profit, civil organizations that I belong to, I've always tried to be someone who could be counted on in getting things done. I believe in speaking truth and being honest to the constituents, whether you're young or whether you're a senior, or whether I'm talking to someone elected or not elected, because I look straight in the eyeball. I want you to know, I'm in this because it comes from my heart. Without hesitation, I can tell you, I love this city. I've served before for eight years. I'd look to serve again. I have expertise in various areas of business. I've been a business agent for a longshoreman. I currently work for the commuter rail, so I know some things about the commuter rail. I've been involved with wind turbines, so I know how that works. And again, I support our fishermen, and I support anybody that has a common cause to vote to see how we can address it. I've just unveiled yesterday something that I would like to do for the homeless, to bring a, a trailer in here that is going to be able to have the homeless shaved, get a haircut, get clean clothes on their back, and they're hydrated. Also jackets, socks, and they're going to be set. And looking to see that we can have a dialogue with those individuals to see what type of crisis that individual is in. But I can tell you for sure, from my heart, I will give it my best, as I always did. Constituent service was my best ability. Thank you, and God bless you, and hope you vote for me November 5th.
With the at-large council candidates, I just wanted to make sure if any members in the audience tonight would like a translator, a Spanish translator. We do have Marie in the back, if Marie would just wait, if that would be of assistance to you. We also have the voter registration forms that were mentioned earlier. The deadline is tonight. We plan to drive them over to City Hall tonight in about fifteen minutes. So if you need to still register to vote anytime for the general election, please come over and see Emily and get that filled out. And also just a friendly reminder that we want everyone to keep to the one minute in the interest of time tonight. Please.
Thank you. Great job, guys. Tremendous, tremendous effort you had today. I'd like to thank everybody that came out today to see this forum. Really appreciate it. I found myself complaining about politics in the city, so I decided to run, trying to make a difference. I saw news agencies not covering what was going on in the city, so I started a page called New Bedford Live. My page sees over five hundred thousand people weekly. We bring the true, real news to the people of New Bedford. No sugarcoating. So now the people who are in New Bedford are well informed on what's going on. No longer can the politicians look at you, smile, and tell you that crime is going down. We know better. Even the children here stated it. Smart kids. I'm asking you to please give me a chance. All I need is one of your votes. If you can vote up to five, probably as you would.
Good evening, all, and thank you all for coming, and most of all, thank you for our kids from Alma Del Mar for hosting this, for this forum. My name is Naomi Carney, and I am your current Counselor-at-Large, and I'm asking you to come out and vote for me again on November 5th. I am a resident, a long-standing resident in New Bedford. I own my house for thirty years. I live in Ward Five on Gen. Lin Street. I have been involved with the community for a very long time. I've been on the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Club for over thirty years. I am the first and only woman of the Board of Directors, which is kind of, kind of crazy. But I've been in this community, serving our children, serving our seniors. I've served on very many boards, American Red Cross, over the time that I've been here in the city. I'm looking to continue to work for the people. I am great with constituent service. I'm a grassroots candidate. I like to talk to people. I'm down there with you. I want you to, and time's up tonight. I don't want to go over my minute, but Naomi Carney, Counselor-at-Large, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for Alma Del Mar for sponsoring this forum. I'm really excited to be here tonight because it involves young people, and I have to say that the future looks good for New Bedford because you're all here tonight and for the parents who support this. My name is Deborah Coelho. Before I was elected, I was an activist. As a young lady in my early twenties, I had a small business, and city services, quality of life issues, crime was a big issue. I decided to get involved, and I've been involved ever since. And then I ran for office, and to my surprise, I won. It was quite a deal. And then I decided to go back to school because that's what the position meant to me. I wanted to be educated on, on politics. And just this year, I graduated with a master's degree from Bridgewater State University. I bring that up because I want everybody to know that New Bedford has opportunities. We can all grow here. I want you and your families to be educated, to have jobs here, and to be happy here, and to have really wonderful homes. New Bedford is a great place. New Bedford is our home, and we need to strive hard every, every day because this is who we are. We're all family. Thank you, and God bless.
So good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Ian Abrams. I am your Counselor-at-Large. I have had the privilege and the honor to be one of your Counselors-at-Large for the last four years. So when it comes to the city of New Bedford and for me and my family, it's personal. It's personal for me because I'm a lifelong resident. It's personal for me because I too have many of you in the audience. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a parent. I'm a homeowner here in the city. So I'd like to think that everyone here in the audience, I have a vested interest, and that's why you're here tonight. Whether it's been working with my colleagues to help pass some comprehensive wage-stuff legislation, holding absentee landlords accountable, giving our police and firefighters the tools that they need to be successful through capital improvement bonding, or whether it's been advocating and trying to attract new economic development and industry here in New Bedford. I have spent this last two years in office completely dedicated towards moving this community forward, and I ask for you to vote again on Tuesday, November 5th. Ian Abrams, thank you.
I too would like to thank everybody for coming and the children of Alma Del Mar for putting on this forum for us. My name is Paul Chase. I'm running for Counselor-at-Large. I am a lifelong resident of New Bedford. My wife Lisa and I raised two boys here. We did a lot of community service when the boys were young. We also did a lot of community service in the schools as the boys were getting older. And now as they have gotten older, one's married and one's in college, I find myself looking to do more service, and that service is through the city council. I bring an economic development background, and why is that important? Because growing small businesses in New Bedford and bringing in new businesses in New Bedford will help bring in more money, which will help freeze property taxes, which will help with school education, which will help with safety, which will help with infrastructure projects. All of it can be helped by economic development, and that is our key that we need to do moving forward. My name is Paul Chase. I'm running for City Council-at-Large. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leo Choquet. I'd like to thank the folks at Alma Del Mar and the students and the teachers and faculty for putting this together. I grew up as a little boy, Harborview Towers, Sixty South Second Street, so I have roots in the city, although my family did move us out to Dartmouth eventually. But I did come back, and much like Counselor Dunn down there, I also graduated from University of Massachusetts School of Law in 2013. And I'm a financial planner. I don't, I don't practice law, but I, I work with families and small business owners, and I try to get them to minimize their tax exposure. Now, this is something that I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to bring to the city council. Taxes are a big problem right now. And we have the third, well, actually, we have the eighth highest commercial tax rate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts out of three hundred fifty-four towns and cities. Business owners do not want to come here if they're going to pay that much money. So we have to find ways to lower both the residential and commercial property taxes. So I'm the kind of candidate that if you want someone who's going to stand up and be your voice, and a candidate who is never going to raise the taxes in this city, and I will do everything I can to keep the city council from raising those property taxes, then I'm the person you want to vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Lisa White. I'm running for Counselor-at-Large. It's not about me, so I'm not going to sit up here and dazzle you with all of my credentials. It's all about you guys. Who's going to represent you guys? Who's going to represent the best interest of the people in the city? Are you guys ready for the train? I'm ready. We have three years, and that's why I'm running. We have three years to get ready for the train. That's thirty-six months. It's not a very long time, but we can get it done.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Anderson. I want to thank the Southie at Alma Del Mar for sponsoring this candidate's night tonight. I'm a longtime city councilor, about twenty-six years, and I'm very proud of my twenty-six years on the city council. I've been a voice for the people of this city. I've stood up when no one else is standing up to address issues. A minute isn't enough to go into that, but you know me. You know how I work. You know what I stand for. I stand for the people of this city, and I always have, for every neighborhood across the city, from Sassablanca to Fort Tabor. I lived down in the south end, but I wasn't afraid when I first got elected to bring water pressure to the far north end. When there are elderly that are living in delinquent, awful conditions, I am the first counselor there the following morning with inspectors bringing a resolve meant to the issue. I will continue to work in that capacity, protecting our kids, protecting our public safety, putting forth ideas that make our city a better place. I hope that you will consider me, one of your five votes for Counselor-at-Large, your voice, and been your voice, and will continue to be your voice. Thank you very much.
So good evening, everyone. I want to begin my remarks by thanking the scholars here at Alma Del Mar for the wonderful reception tonight, opening the doors, saying hello, introducing yourself. Future politicians, I think we should give them a round of applause. My name is Linda Boran, and I'm one of the veteran counselors on the New Bedford City Council. For the last fourteen years, I've had the privilege and the honor to serve the residents of New Bedford. I started my career in the council as a ward counselor, and then I became elected as a Counselor-at-Large. I love my position on the New Bedford City Council. I love using my position to be able to help people with their concerns. Each one of us on the New Bedford City Council has a strength, and working together, we work to bring your interests forward and to move the city forward. I hope that you've been pleased with my service over the last fourteen years. I know you know I'm an experienced leader, and I hope that you will cast your vote for me on November 5th to give me the honor to continue to serve you as a member of the New Bedford City Council. Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Angel, and I live near North End, North End of New Bedford. I mentioned earlier that some neighborhoods are not very safe. Well, that's what it feels, well, it feels like there's a shooting every week where my family lives. My mom doesn't like us going outside after school, and I'm always worried for my younger sibling. I know I'm not alone in this feeling, and I'm curious. What will you do to reduce gun violence and make neighborhoods like mine safer? As a reminder, each candidate will be able to answer four questions of their choosing. Simply raise your hand if you would like to answer a question, and I will call on you.
Thank you. I think this is a very serious issue. Every resident in our city deserves a safe neighborhood to call upon. You have to be able to walk around your neighborhood, and those are just baseline standards that we should be enjoying. And I agree, right now, our neighborhood's not, not experiencing that level of public safety. But I think there is an issue that is not being fully examined, and that's what's going on in the police department right now. Rowals are all-time low. You're seeing a majority of the officers trying to transfer out of the department. And we're expecting them to do, to do this job while they're having these internal struggles. And they're also working without a contract from the city. So imagine getting asked to do a job and actually not even getting the contract to do that job. I think we also have to invest in making sure that our officers have the equipment that they need to be safe to go out and do this job. The, our officers are buying their own protective gear. They bought themselves vector shields this year, and they don't, they aren't automatically equipped with bulletproof vests. So I think number one is, is making sure that our departments are properly functioning. And right now, there's a problem. Thank you.
Yeah, this is the thing, you know, it's, it's election season, so, you know, politicians are going to talk about the crime and everything. What we need is a, a city council that's actively talking about this. We need to be able to keep the finger on the pulse. We need to be in the neighborhoods. And I would love the man to be here today to listen to these children. It's amazing how intelligent they are and how much they take in. It's amazing how intelligent they are and how much they take in and understand what's really going on. Sometimes I think they're a lot brighter than the adults that I see on any basis. And I think the city council should be advocating a little bit more for the police. I understand it's election season, but let's be a little bit more proactive. Let's get at it a little bit before it's election season. And I think we see a lot better outcome, keeping the mayor accountable. Where short, how many police officers? Forty, sixty?
Thank you. I'd like to echo the concerns that councillor Dunn brought up about our police department not having long-term contracts. We live in a city where we have the richest commercial seaport in North America. We're already paying outrageous taxes for property, again, at residential, commercial level. So, why is it that the police are not being given what they require? It's a slap in the face to public safety. And if you elect me on this council, I will do everything I can to make sure that the fine men and women in the New Bedford Police Department have everything they need, contracts included, equipment, training, everything they need to do their jobs, so that morale can be restored. Okay, this is the tip of the municipal spear. These are the people that work for us as far as the city goes. Police, fire, teachers, ancillary people. So, they deserve basic contracts. They deserve the equipment they need. And the only other thing I would add is perhaps we could have some officers being able to walk the beat once in a while in certain high-crime neighborhoods, especially folks who are from those neighborhoods, and to build loyalty with the citizens. And that would be a good way to, you know, get closer to the people. Thank you.
So, I actually ran for office because that was, public safety was a huge issue where I live and it's still a very huge issue in the city of New Bedford. I've also chaired public safety as well as councillor Gomes. We kind of go back and forth. And I think overall, we do the best we can on the council. And I just want to start this on a positive note. First of all, we're getting a public safety center on Brock Avenue. That's going to totally change that neighborhood and they need it. We have new cruisers, 11 new cruisers just came in. We have increased mobile cameras. We have safety radio communications. We have 40 active shooter kits out there. So, we also need the support of the state for gun safety. New Bedford has more shootings than I don't know what. And I fear, I fear, just like all of you fear, even when I'm sitting at home. I mean, I live on Ninth Street. We had shootings right through somebody's door and another one right through their window. So, I get what your kids are feeling and what the parents are feeling. And we need to do more about it. And I want you to know, we're on it. But it requires a lot of work and it's every day we're on it. And it's very, very frustrating. But I want you to know, we're really doing our best. Thank you.
So, we wanted $7 million to upgrade our communication systems for the police and fire departments. But clearly, that's not enough. I live on the peninsula. I live on the south end. I'm very proud and happy that we are getting a new public safety center. But a new public safety in the south end doesn't make folks in the far north end or the west end feel too good. Because I'm sure you may be asking, well, where's my new police station? Where's my new fire station? Those are legitimate questions and concerns that you have. And those are questions that we're going to continue to fight for and I'm going to continue to fight for as your councillor at large to make sure every voice in all of our neighborhoods are heard. Another factor with violence in our neighborhoods that we didn't talk about yet tonight, but I'm proud of my record on this, is holding absentee landlords accountable. Making sure that if there are neighborhoods that have properties that are in squalor, we're holding those folks accountable by the letters of the law of our problem property ordinance, which I'm proud of my vote. And all of us collectively, we voted to put more teeth into that ordinance to hold these folks accountable. Think about it. If there's a neighborhood in ruin, it may attract folks who do want to do harm or not do good things in this community. So, if we clean up these neighborhoods, it'll attract a better clientele to the city of New Bedford. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As public safety chair, and when I came to the city council, one of the main things that I had concerns with was the safety of the city. And I know that I have a hand in making a lot of neighborhoods safer than what they are. One minute is not enough time to tell you all of that. But I'm one of the first councillors to bring the SUVs to the police department when I knew our police department couldn't get around and the Fords that they were driving around in. I'm the guy that asks for the police department to be trained so that they can be ready for anything. And the last thing we want is a shooting here in the city. The police department does not have a contract, but I don't want anybody in this room to think that the police department is not out there doing their job each and every eight-hour shift it goes by because they are, they are out there and they're protecting you. I've tried to protect these neighborhoods from Chancery Street to the far north end. And I will continue to work in that capacity. When I asked for us to have a summit was because I felt the neighborhoods were out of control, some of them, and what was happening. And to the young people that are here, they shouldn't have to live in any fear. They're all the people that are here. No one should have to live in any fear. No one should have shots fired in their neighborhood. I live on Clara Street. In the daily daylight of the hour, shots were fired on my street. Okay? Something that doesn't happen like that all the time. I will continue to work in that capacity. Safety has been my top priority in this city and I know I've made a difference everywhere.
As the Ward Two councillor, I understand that a lot of people are afraid. Let me just tell you that I work every day. I call the Captain Acosta on at Station Three. I am in contact with him daily, weekly if not daily. The men and women that protect us say they have a tremendous job. And it's not an easy job to do. They put their lives on line for us and we support them. And we try to give them the necessary tools that they need. I walk around my neighborhood all the time. I live on Princeton Street, right near Brooklyn Park. And I walk the neighborhoods down to Nash Road, sometimes to Bullard, sometimes to Nye. And when I do see problem properties, I take pictures. I send them to inspectional services. I contact the police. It's very important that we all work together as one. We really do. When you see a problem going on, you can contact any one of us on the city council and let us know what is going on in your neighborhood. And we will call the police and do what's necessary. But we need to continue to support our police officers. And let me just say one thing that you can do, that we do, that my family and my neighbors do. Leave your lights on. Leave your lights on just so that the police, when they show up, they can see what's around your neighborhood and your property. If you can afford to have a camera on your property, do that. We also are responsible for taking care and taking over our neighborhoods again and helping our police officers. Thank you very much.
I think that's a great question. It sucks when you know the difference between a firecracker and fireworks and gunshot, huh? I live in a neighborhood like that. So, here's the deal with what's going on in these neighborhoods. Absentee landlords, lack of education, lack of resources, lack of funding. So, now I'm going to come out in these neighborhoods. You can ride down here, you can ride down North Front, go down all these side streets. You can go up the west end. There's a couple of blocks where there's problems. Go down south end, there's a couple of blocks where there's problems. Go up north, there's a big area of problems. Due to drugs, due to poverty, due to no hope. How do we get more people hope? How do we find more programs to get people into employment? How do we find more programs to get these absentee landlords held accountable? How do we get police officers paid more money so that they can roam these streets and do their job correctly? And how do we hold each other responsible for how we take care of our neighborhoods?
So, thank you for the question. And what I will say is it is not an easy solution, certainly not one that you can encapsulate in one minute. However, there are a few ideas that I do have, bring it to the city council. Number one is increasing the community policing. I do believe community policing helps and I think we need to increase that even more. I think we need to stop expanding pocket parks. I think pocket parks can be a dangerous place for drugs and for violence. So, we have to be careful about the expansion of pocket parks. We have to also look at vacant properties, not only the absentee landlords. We actually have vacant properties in the city of New Bedford that the New Bedford should roll back over, get back to private citizens and get back on the tax rolls and also make that more protective of the area. So, there are a few things there. And when it comes to schools specifically, we need to increase mentorship in the schools, particularly in the middle-grade school section. So, middle school grades are highly susceptible in an area that we need to do more enhanced mentorship to bring these kids up and give them that education and hope that they really need. Thank you.
You know why we have crime here? Have you guys ever taken a rental car to a car wash? We need more ownership. Once we have more ownership, we'll have more people caring about what's going on around their property. Studies have shown that a rise in homeownership of just 1% can cut the area crime by 1%. We are at 41% homeownership in New Bedford. That's nearly 20% below the national average. But if we were to raise that to 50%, it would mean 100 people buying a house every month from here until when the train comes in 2023. And that would lower our crime rate, according to two statistics, 9%, which is nothing to sneeze at. That's a huge, huge difference there.
You know, I'm sitting here and it's so disturbing to hear young individuals talk about the fear that they have, not only down to the elderly, the general population. I have a great concern in making sure that the men and women in public safety, whether it be the fire department, the police department, EMS, has the proper tools to work and do the necessary things. Making sure we get a contract, again, we restore pride in the department. The morale's low. The leadership is not doing an effective job. So, that doesn't help. I've been in areas where shooting, seeing people on the ground and ask them to cover the carcass that's on the ground. It's disturbing. I want to make sure we have the best police force. I like to sit down there sometime and speak to the judges and ask them. It must be frustrating when a police officer accorhead somebody. Half an hour later, hour later, they're back on the street. We see this over and over. I want to sit down and, but they can't change people on these motorcycles and put something in place where they're licensed, they're not going to be able to have a license for five or 10 years. I want to change the Fox Law. Give somebody five years in jail if you carry a gun and more sensitive if you do a shootout. Thank you.
Can't do anything without my glasses anymore. It hasn't changed. That's why we need a change. The young people are more afraid now than before that shootings are up. I can tell you that the police officers out walking in the community. They're talking to gang members. They're writing notes down. There's shooters, there's spotters all over the city. In my neighborhood, unlucky, the worst thing I worry about is the mosquitoes at night. We have a problem with that too. But I also see in my area, Loftus Street, open-air drug deals. I've seen other crimes in the area, some crimes in some people that may not understand just by seeing them going on. If you rode around this city with me, it's probably a little different than everyone else sitting here. Because I'll say, oh, well, back here by the Panther Club, yeah, I had a stabbing there. I had a shooting over here. There are buildings in this city with holes in them from cases that I've represented. I represent the criminals. But I also represent the people that need to be defended. And this city hasn't changed. It seems to be getting worse. We've got to raise the morale for the police officers, support them and get more police officers on the ground. I said that before, I say it again. Thank you.
Thank you. I was waiting for all the questions, but everybody answered this one, so. So anyways, what I see out there, what's happening, I work for the Bristol County Sheriff's Department. I'm in jail every day. What I see out there is a revolving door in the courts. What we need to do is legislation to stop the judges from opening the doors and letting the criminals walk out the door. They go in there, there's a shooting, there's crime, there's drug dealings. Everything revolves around this opioid addiction stuff. Then all of a sudden, they go to court, they're out on the streets again. They're on the streets with very little bail. What we need to do is focus on legislation where we can keep the criminals in jail, get them off the streets. These children should not have to worry about going out after school. When I grew up, I grew up on Blumento's project. I rode my bike when we moved to Dartmouth, when I was in the fifth grade, down to Blumento's and played with my friends, because those were the only friends I had, and rode my bike back home. You cannot do that in this day and age and that's sad. So, I want to make sure that we focus on legislation because we've got to look at the courts and keep them incarcerated because that's what's going on. We have a revolving door and people are getting hurt. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maggie and I'm in seventh grade. There were a few questions that were submitted by members of the public for candidates to answer. Remember, each of you just has one minute to give your response. How do you feel about addressing climate change through local initiatives like eliminating single-use plastics and enforcing no idol laws?
As far as the no idol law goes, there is a law in the books in the city of New Bedford. You can only give your car idling for five minutes. Something that I'd like to see happen in city hall too, my office is right across the street. And every time that furnace turns on, there's this big black fellow, this black slope coming out there. The first thing I think of, oh, they didn't elect a pope. So, I would like to see the city to become more green. We could invest in the cars. We could do electric cars rather than gas-filled cars. There's a lot we can do with this city from the inside. Start by the inside. As the city does it, then the residents will do it as well.
So, I think that the city has been doing a good job on climate change-related issues. In the city council, we've just fast-tracked a plastic bag ban, which is coming back up in my ordinance committee for final authorization later this month. But I think this region is really poised to take leadership on climate change because we have the Mass Darkin. We have Woods Hole on the Cape doing great federal research on climate change and oceanography. We have URI. So, you have this area of scientists who are all really equipped to go after climate change. And New Bedford can be leading that as well as the municipal partner that's bringing these folks together. So, I think that we're on the right track and there's a great deal of opportunity for us to be leading climate change efforts nationally. Thank you.
And I agree with councillor Dunn. I think the city is doing its part. I mean, look around, the solar panels that you see out there these days, and that's all helping to cut down on the emissions of green, vacant and more green. Also too, we want to propose for the wind turbines coming out of New Bedford. So, we are looking at all of that. As far as plastic bags, I'm in the textile business and you have plastic bags. You put them in the ground, they'll stick around 100 years. So, we do need to do something there. I hope we will think about it, obviously it causes litter.
So we do need to do something there. I hope we will think about it, obviously it causes litter and waste. Uh, but also as it gets ground up, it goes into our oceans. Uh, I saw a thing on TV that there was birds that were dying and they opened them up, they were full of plastic. So it is a big concern. There was a lot of things we could do, again, um, in the city itself, electric cars, sort of things that we can do. And I also think we are looking at a lot of these and trying to get those initiatives forward.
Thank you. Um, I believe we can all uh, make our footprint a little smaller on what we use every day, but reusing some of the, of the things that we can reuse. And I'd just like to mention that New Bedford is a leader among clean uh, energy uh, communities. And I think we should be really proud of that. We've come a long way. We have solar, we have wind. The infrastructure in the city of New Bedford during my time on the council, we have replaced all the uh, infrastructure with uh, LED lighting, uh, energy-saving aspect. And the city streets lighting, I don't know if you folks noticed, but they're all upgraded and changed for efficiency. I know some, it took us a while to get, you see it because the lighting was a little different and a little dimmer. But we're saving a lot of money and more importantly, it's, it's a green, uh, you know, path of way to the future. We also have bike lines in the city of New Bedford, something we didn't have before. So you can ride your bike in the city of New Bedford. I do it all the time and it's perfectly safe. So I encourage the kids to do that as well. And just want to finish that, we planted a lot of trees. Take care of those trees. Sometimes I see kids yanking out the branches. Kids, protect your trees. Those are your trees. Thank you.
So I voted for the plastic ban motion for the bags and it's in the ordinance committee now. I look forward to a swift passage on that. Another item, we talked about, uh, you know, lessening our carbon footprint here in New Bedford in the South Coast, of course, is the continued advocacy of South Coast Rail. I don't know if we're all aware, but 40% of New Bedford's workforce actually leaves the city to go to work every single day. So you're on Route 24, you're on 195, you're on 140, you get the picture. South Coast Rail, when it comes in here by 2023, we're now going to lessen that carbon footprint by getting folks who commute, not just to Boston, but up along the way through Bridgewater, Taunton, Fall River, Rockton. We're now getting those folks from the Wheels Tooth parking lot, from Church Street, North End and the downtown to their place of work. I think that's huge. We can't discount that. Taking cars off of the road will lessen the log jam and the bottleneck that we have every single day on our highways and roadways. We're gonna take thousands of cars off our roads every single day once the rail comes here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jazal and I'm in fifth grade. My brother, Famil, and I love playing Amazon Mark's College. And we are so glad our momma taught us to get into the water. We love our teachers and how they worked so hard to support and challenge every class to be successful. What do you think should be done to make sure that every kid in New Bedford has access to a high-quality education? What do you think could be done to make sure that every kid in New Bedford has a high-quality education?
Thank you for that question. Um, first off, I believe that every parent has the right to choose where they want their child to be educated. But I also believe it shouldn't come at the expense of public school education. Um, so we really need to beef up our public school educators, make sure that they are licensed, that they are qualified, that they are representing the demographics of the community that they are servicing. Um, we need to make sure that they feel supported, that they feel encouraged, that they feel, that they have a professional development plan in front of them, that they are working towards so that that way they can also be part of the succession plan for our future. We need to make sure that our students are seeing people who represent them in the classroom and in the building. Um, education is important to me. I know that when I was growing up, I didn't feel that I saw anyone who represented my culture. Um, and so it didn't feel real. And so our kids in New Bedford need to see people like them, to, to see that they can accomplish anything and everything and that they really are our future.
So in my past life, I taught in Springfield Public School System in an elementary classroom, actually. It's a, it's an English, English second language in a special needs classroom. And so I really understand uh, this issue and how important it is that we invest correctly in our students. And I also understand how parents can see that they think a charter system is the right way to go rather than the public. But I, I would challenge folks right now uh, to really fight to get further investment in our public school system because that's the system that's accessible to all the families in New Bedford. The charter system, it should serve as a, a place to test and develop programs. It, it shouldn't be a long-term solution. Uh, I think that New Bedford succeeds when all of our students are prepared for success. So I, I would challenge folks from the charter community to work with the public uh, system to ask for increased funding for education for our students.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Everything that I am today is because of a public school teacher. Uh, and also a few nuns from the Catholic school system. But other than that, um, I, I have no children. So this is kind of an issue that I don't really have a huge skin in the game, but I still have thoughts and concerns. In my opinion, as a city councillor in large, my job would be to work with the school department and to make sure that the public school system is the best viable option for all children in this city. I, I am not here to tell you where to send your children to school, whether you send them to private school, parochial school, charter school, public school. My concern is that the city of New Bedford provides the best quality education that it can and that the teachers are given everything they need in order to succeed in doing that. Um, as far as the charter system goes, I'm not a huge fan of it only because I believe it takes money out of the New Bedford public school system and concentrates it amongst other students that are, are separate from the remaining students in the other public school system. So that being said, I think we need to level the playing field. And my job would be to definitely defend the public school system. I hope a lot of you will think that way too.
So my goal as a representative of the city and someone who's spending taxpayer money is to make sure in the school department that money is spent on the children's education. And over the course of my term, I've been making sure that when money is given to the school department, that it goes into the classroom. That's where it needs to go. My colleagues and I that have been on the council for a while, not too long ago, uh, gave the New Bedford Public School System a million dollars for looks and made sure, put strings on that money to make sure that that money was spent in the classroom so that the students could have the best uh, uh, resources that they need to further their public education. We did that as well in matching a grant with Erin Jacobs to bring laptops to the middle school and high school um, students. That's, that's what needs to be done. And what you need to do as parents and students is to advocate on the state level to make sure that New Bedford gets its fair share of money, of Chapter 70 money for children's education. New Bedford gets a disproportionate amount per student based on the other suburban communities that surround Boston, the affluent communities. You, you have a stake in this as well. We need your help to make your voice heard when you go to talk with your state legislators or your state senate. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I am school choice, okay? I think the problem lies not with charter schools, because charter schools are public schools. It lies with, this lies with our legislative. It's disproportionate how they fund the money. My kids did go to New Bedford Public Schools and went to Holy Family to eighth grade. Not that I wanted to pay tuition, but I needed childcare as a single mom, you need childcare. I didn't even know where my children were. After that, they went to vocational, vocational school. So they were never involved in there because I needed the resources. So I paid. I also paid into the city's tax base and also paid the Catholic school. So I know what it's like to put in the money and to pay and not see what's coming out of it. But we have to fight Boston. We have to fight the legislature there because even though we have school choice, we gotta make sure that, that the resources that go to the public schools, because if you have one child in the classroom, you gotta heat the entire classroom. Doesn't matter how many kids there and that's the problem. We are not getting the funding here in New Bedford to put it in our classrooms so that way we can support, so that way parents will have school choice. Because I do believe in school choice and like I said, charter schools are public schools. It's Boston that we have to fight to make sure this money comes here in New Bedford, to make sure that every child has an opportunity to learn in the environment that the parents want them to learn or they want to learn. Thank you.
Repeat your question.
What do you think can be done to make sure that every kid has access to a high-quality education?
The problem don't lie with, with just the charter schools or the public schools. The problem lies with absentee parents, the lack of knowledge with parents in the communities. We have these programs coming on. Used guys have parents that are involved. There's not a lot of kids in these schools that have parents that are involved. There's not a lot of kids that come to school fed. There's not a lot of kids that come to school from safe homes. You want to talk about equality, how, how are we gonna make sure that they have a better quality? We have to have more communication from the school to the parent. We have to let them know what they're getting with their grades, how they're doing in school and how they can come in and have transparency and communicate with people in the schools. So if you want to have a better education and parents don't know where to send their school, oh, the school's over there, we're just gonna send them there. I see kids walk into school, eight years old, six years old, seven years old by themselves every day, to inform. And I think that the care that we have to have for our kids and to make sure that they all get a chance, I think that we have to educate parents alone, we have to be more outgoing in the community. And then we start from there and then we move forward. It starts with us. And don't start just with the money that we're not getting in. We know we're not getting the money in, alright? We know that teachers are underpaid, alright? We know not everybody gets into charter schools. But how do we find a solution for that instead of keep on complaining about the problems to them?
There's, there's been a lot of good comments here and I came from a family, my, uh, actually both my parents are educators in the city of New Bedford. I'm a chemistry teacher at New Bedford High, I'm tied as the principal at Keith. And my mom also taught at Keith. So he always would say, you can get as good an education in New Bedford as anywhere. You can. Um, you see in the public schools, well, what you gonna do? I find both my daughters graduates of New Bedford Public Schools. And I tell people they did too good a job because they got into every school they used to be applied to at a college. It's cost me a lot more money than I expected to pay, but that's a good thing. So they did a great job, but I also figured in what cut them through was teachers that can engage the student. Also, you have to engage the parent. Again, as a comment was made to come down and, and make sure your child is getting the education and be concerned about that education. Also, we have to give out teachers the environment to teach. You talk to a lot of teachers, they're just taking most of their time trying to keep things under control and not being able to teach. So that, to me, is the key, but by engaging the parents, maybe they would take a little more interest in their child and that way they could kind of keep things working out where that child now wants to go to school and wants to learn. So there's a lot of things we can do, but I think engagement is the key. And I think teachers here and in New Bedford or any other school, Roosevelt, all those schools are good teachers. Everybody comes out, they want to teach. Again, we just have to give them the environment to teach.
I'd just like to say that I find it to be very, very important for the quality of education for every student and every individual in the, in the Commonwealth and also in this great city of New Bedford. I was a product that I was bused to school where they were integrating minorities. So when I went to Park Street School, I went to Lincoln School. I want to let you know that I support the New Bedford Education Teachers Association, number one. I have respect for charter schools, but I would like to see charter schools, one, address the concerns of the uh, money when a student uh, leaves the charter school, that that money be returned. I want to equal basis, dollar for dollar, some of the same things that happened in a public school happened in the charter school. We wasted $21,000 with the last superintendent trying to retool and refit teachers in the classroom. Not the fault of the teachers, the fault of the leadership, the fault in the budget, money being wasted. I have no problem in cutting this budget up. And I would like to see the charter school also address, you know, if it's a disciplinary problem, if, if it's a kid with special needs, that they do the same thing as public schools. Because I hear they're public schools, but there's a selection. And I would like to see it a little more broader. I don't, you know, say that I don't want to see charter schools, but my first intent as a city councillor is quality of education. And if I have to feed New Bedford's school system first, that's what I would do. Thank you.
So I can appreciate this question. Again, I have two children that are now grown up. And um, the first thing I'll say is there is room in the city of New Bedford for all schools. Public schools, charter schools, parochial schools. And the reason why is because every child learns differently and every child deserves a chance in whatever atmosphere that they have. Specifically for education, a couple of things that I would like to see. I would like to see the technology program from the high school of the laptops that helped my son succeed so well and get into college, you move down to the middle, middle school level as well. I'd like to see the dual enrollment program, not the dual enrollment program of the high school to the college level, but the dual enrollment program that is started in the middle school level enhanced and, and expanded to the high school because that also has helped a lot of children to go from middle school to high school. These are all important areas. Another area is mentorship. And I'm not just talking about adults to children. I'm talking about creating mentorships for older children to younger children that we can have where the, the younger children learn by example of kids not much older than them that can help them and guide them through the education process. Just a few ideas. Thank you.
Well, I, I'm a public, I'm a student of the uh, public school system here in the city of New Bedford. So I went to elementary and graduated from New Bedford High School. And I believe that the public system as well as charter school system can coexist and need to coexist. I really feel that charter schools are the spirit of America. And I'm going to explain why. Because we need incubators of innovation and change. And that's what charter schools are doing right now. This is picking up on the state of Massachusetts, things that change rapidly. We're seeing what work and what doesn't work and we're trying to fix as we move forward with this. I really believe that we, we as a community, as families, as our children, we need to see what's best for them. And if it's costly and painful and disrupts some of us, well, that's how we, we grow. And I really believe in that. I've supported charter schools right at the get-go. I'm gonna keep doing that. And I also support, support the school system because, again, we're all family and our kids go to both public uh, school system and the charter school system. Thank you.
My name is Delise and I'm in fifth grade, scholar and almon. I'm lucky to have a park near my house that I can go to. But I know a lot of my friends in classmates that don't have places they can go that are free and easy to get to. What is one thing you would do to improve the access to fun activities for your youth in New Bedford?
I love these kids. Well, as a member of being on the board of directors of the Boys and Girls Club, there's a small fee to get in there, but if you can't pay, a parent can't pay, you're not turned away at the door. You're welcome in. But we have parks all over the city, they're free. We need to look at more innovation for the kids to do something there. I know growing up, we had recreation in all the parks and the schools and the backyard. We went there and did gift and had recreation. They took us to the beach. So every day there was something for the kids to do. What we need to do is also look at opening up the schools, the gyms in the evening. I know it says it costs money, everything costs money, but there's so many people that wanna be out there volunteering. There's a lot of volunteers and people that are willing to stand with these kids. I know there's a lot of stuff that's not necessary for them to do, but we have to create, we have to be innovative for these kids to be in different places. So first thing I'd look at is look at the schools. Who wants to volunteer? Let's open up these schools. Let's get programs in for evening things, for dances, things the kids can have fun with in the evening. So that's what I would do. I'd look at that, get those parks moving. Because there's a lot of things we could do in the city that are free to the kids. And I know, and I know, I do a lot of volunteering with the kids and I know so many people that will reach out. We have a fine police department that does volunteerism too. So we just have to reach out, fire, police, your city councilors. I mean, we have many, many advocates in the community that do have free programs for the kids. We're just gonna let you know so you can go and do it. Thank you.
I think there are a ton of programs for the youth in this city. But I know a lot of programs in the schools are built around the so-called good kids and not the kids that actually need the programs. That's first off. Second off, how do we get us companies involved? They're making a lot of money off a lot of schools, they're making a lot of money off a lot of people. How do we get them to donate some of their time to bring kids to some of these programs? And how do we inform everybody? Not everybody goes on, or everybody goes on Facebook, but... Not everybody follows the city website. Not everybody follows the website for, you know, the pocket recs department. I know Buddy does a good program, the Boys Club does a good program. Mr. Gil down at Dennis Memorial has a program. I think it's spread out throughout the city, but there's not enough that cater to the kids that actually need it. And we can't just say we want gyms. We gotta get these kids educated. We have to find programs because not everybody wants to be an athlete. Some kids wanna deal with art, some kids are good with science, some kids are good with building things. Some kids are good with their hands, some people wanna be cooks. So we have to find out programs that goes to every kid and not just to open a gym. Because not every kid just wants to go play basketball. There's a lot of kids that do play sports, there's a lot of kids that don't. So how do we cater to young ladies? How do we cater to young people that don't know their way without having a gym? And how do we hold people responsible of getting transportation companies involved to get these youth to these places? And we have to get parents educated, we have to get the word out for what's going on so they can sign their kids up for these programs.
Well, I grew up near Brookline Park and we had some programs all the time. My brothers were out playing baseball and I was sitting inside making pot holders, which was a lot of fun. And I think that's something that we need to expand and that's one of the things that I've been working on is a community center in the North End. We really need one there. There are a lot of children in the neighborhood, it's great that they go to the park, but we need a place that they can feel safe, that their parents can send them to. Maybe work with the local schools to, you know, have different programs for them. So that's something that I've been working very hard with and I wanna thank my colleagues on the council who have been working with me, especially Councilor Dunn, Councilor Abreu and Carney. You guys have really helped me push the initiative for a community center. So thank you, and also Councilor Morad. It's very important. I mean, I grew up, I'm a child of immigrant parents and I know how difficult it is, especially with the language barrier. But we always were able to do things in our neighborhood and we just need to perpetuate that more. And parents need to get involved, so do older brothers and sisters. Get your younger brothers and sisters involved. As much as they hate you right now, when you get a little bit older, they will love you. So thank you very much for that question because I think it's very important. Thank you.
Well, you know, recreation in the city of New Bedford, there's plenty of things to institute. But what we first gotta do is make parents accountable, accountable for their actions to make sure that their kids get to where they're supposed to be. You know, back in the olden days, a lot of parents would walk their kids' blocks to get into the CYO. Do many of you remember those places around the city, County and Allen Street and the Kennedy Youth Center, and it goes on and on. The whole point is here is we have things in the city that are there for the kids to do. What we need is parents to be engaged to make sure that their kids... I always made sure that my son was at baseball. I always made sure that my son was where he was supposed to be or my daughter. And that's what we need parents to do. I don't wanna hear this that it's too far to walk or it costs money or whatever. There's plenty of things that don't cost money. And I'm gonna agree with the gentleman, Mr. Baptista, talked about. Every kid is not a basketball player, every kid is not an athlete. So some kids are good at the computer, some kids are good at art, some kids are good at building things. Some kids are just good with working their hands. We should make those opportunities for all. But again, the city of New Bedford, I think, has many things for our children to do. Let's get the parents engaged. Many parents, and you commend those parents, that make sure each and every day, you know, after a long day at work, come home, eat dinner right away and they turn it over and they do what they have to do. And they have the ability to do that. For those that don't have the ability to do that, you still need to be part of your kid's life and part of their future and taking care of what they need to do each and every day. Thank you.
Yes, I believe that there's a lot more room for improvement for activities for the youth. I can recall when we were having a high, high rally taking place in the South Central area. I even went to the bishop of the Catholic social churches and asked them to open up CYO. They refused. We gotta engage all avenues, the houses of worship, the parents, the schools. Look to have BCC, human establishment, also touching to some of these kids. Some of them take up courses in music, kids might like music. Somebody takes up something in drama, we can take up drama. But we have to also engage the parents and those parents that have to work or have the responsibility of being home and doing some other things. If we can network in the neighborhood, because when you reach, I reach, and when they reach, you reach. So we have to build these blocks together and look to see how we can accommodate these kids to the best of their abilities. Thank you.
Well, I think it's important, first thing we have to do is get everyone off the computers and get out and see some fresh air. Everybody's on their computers, everyone's on their phones. Parents these days give their kids their phones. I mean, if you have a problem with your computer or phone, you ask the tutor, they can clear it for you. That's a change in our technology, but we still need to get people out in the community. We need to make our parks safer. I have a beautiful park right across from my house. I can walk it and closes at night, but it's safe. We need to have every park safe. We need to support our officers, get them out there, work with the community, walk them through those parks. Make sure we have a place for our children to go and things to do. Holding parents accountable, we have to hold our whole community accountable. Because if we want kids to succeed, we all have to succeed.
Just to kind of go on, what everybody's kind of saying here, but I think to really get the child engaged would be the after-school programs. I know when my children were in school, from elementary school to middle school to high school, they did all kinds of things with whether it was athletics, chess, art, drama, it's all there. And I also feel that if you do it after-school or in the school system, the teachers can kinda mentor a child and maybe see what they're good at and kinda maybe say, "Try art, try this, poetry." I mean, my daughter didn't know anything about poetry. Next thing I know, she's in elementary school, she's writing poetry. So I think the after-school programs are a good place to start. Not the only place, I think with the parks and everything else. But it would make sense, and then with the late buses, there's the transportation. So they get to school, after-school, they do their after-school programs, then they get on a bus and come home. And I know at the high school, I think there's almost a five or six o'clock bus. So there's some real late buses. So to me, that would be one of the places to start. And again, that way they'd be engaged with the teacher and with the parents if they so wanted to.
Great. We have time for one more question. We promised everyone that we would be out at eight tonight because it was a school thing. And we have one more question and we welcome answers from everyone.
Drug overdoses continue to happen almost daily in their city. We all know someone, maybe not personally, but through family or friend connection, was addicted to drugs, has overdosed on drugs or passed away because of drug overdose. What should be done on a local level to stop these drug overdosers from overdoses from occurring?
Well, I'm gonna answer that one because I live with so many drug overdoses in my neighborhood and in my street that I can't stand it anymore. I mean, people are overdosing two, three, four times in twenty-four hours. Salem's Hospital doesn't hold them, they send them back out. The police having a hard time with them because it's a messy business. And I do mean messy. It's very hard to deal with when people overdose. I'm very disappointed that we're trying to get treatment centers in the city of New Bedford and yet some neighborhoods don't want it. I don't understand that. People that want to recover are some of the best human beings you're ever gonna find because they want a normal life. Each and every one of us can be addicted at any time of our lives. It can happen to anybody, everybody. It doesn't choose. It's the drugs that are out there now in the streets, it is poison. It will kill you. Eventually, it will kill you. I have a pocket park next to me that people are sleeping there, injecting themselves, and it really, really sad. I'm trying to work with the captain right now to make it go away. And this is not going away. We all need to work together and stick together because this problem is all over America, but we represent here in New Bedford. We gotta do more and we gotta stand together and be firm about it. Thank you.
I have this last question. I'm actually gonna bring it all the way down to the end and you can just pass along if you have a question.
So I'm not sure in my role as a city councilor exactly what I can do to make that, to make drug overdoses in the city less than what they are. It's an addiction, it's a problem. But certainly, whatever was in my responsibility, whatever I can do to take our resources and help people to be able to better themselves, I would be in support of that. You know, like everybody here, I know someone, a family member, an acquaintance, someone who struggled with drug addiction over the course of their lifetime. I've done my best, as I'm sure all of you have, to support that person however I can, to be there when they need me and to help them however I can, financially, morally, with support, with spirit. And I would, I'd ask you all to do that and I will continue to do that in my role as a private citizen and, excuse me, and as an elected official.
Thank you very much. What can we do about the drug epidemic in the city of New Bedford? Well, the first thing that we can do is hold the drug company accountable for their actions. I was one of the first councillors to stand up and say that we have to get back something from the opiate manufacturers because they knew what was happening to us. They knew what was happening to our communities and they did nothing about it because the almighty dollar was stronger than anything else. And that seems to be the case in this area and in most places. But what we can do is hold them accountable. The second thing that we can do is we can hold the drug dealer accountable. I have said over and over and over, to increase the penalties on those that sell drugs into our young people, to our city, to our people, we hold you accountable. Someone dies because you sold them something, you're held for murder. You're held for murder. You hold these people accountable for their actions. At the same time, providing the services that are needed for those that have been a victim in some way, somehow, of the drug problem, to have those treatments available. But again, we cannot run A through F in a system that I have continuously say that I think it's a money train for all those that are making money off this drug epidemic in the city. You go to Plan A, you move over to B, you get to C, and they tell you there's no room for you. So where do you wind up? Back to the street. So the system isn't working. It's gotta make, it's gotta work from A to E or whatever because it's important to the city of New Bedford, it's important to the communities, it's important to those that have been a victim of that drug epidemic. And this is the way that we help them and by having that available like that. But not having that available, not holding people accountable, not holding the pharmaceutical companies accountable, we don't win. That's the game that has to be played. Thank you very much.
There's a lot of different levels to this question. I think that overall, people are more important than profits. But that's at the federal level, that's lobbyists. We have a problem there. We have a problem when an insulin pen costs seven hundred dollars but a Narcan shot is free. What we could do is consider a drug overdose as an attempted suicide and we could hold them for seventy-two hours. It's not much, but it's enough to get the drugs out of their system. It's enough that maybe, just maybe, they could make the right choice.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of Councilor Gomes. I feel strongly in several of those same regards. Number one, this city has to join some form of class action lawsuit against these pharmaceutical companies. They have sold poison to the communities, not just this community, but communities across America. Number two, if you are a distributor in this city, you are going to go to jail and you're gonna do serious time. You are a poisoner of the community. You don't get to drive around in a Bentley and do whatever else. If you're selling heroin to people, you're out of here. You're out of this community. We don't want you here, okay? And then finally, anybody who has to have a Narcan shot administered to them, you know, obviously they who have overdosed, I believe there should be a mandatory thirty-day treatment program that they go into instead of being just released back onto the street. Thank you.
This is a tough question to answer in a minute. Certainly a tough question for a city council as well because city council really only has so much purview. A lot of what's being talked about here today involves the courts, involves state and federal law, which we don't have any jurisdiction over. What I can say is, as a city councilor, there are things we can do and that's zoning. I've talked about pocket parks. I think we need to take a hard look at pocket parks and what they're doing and the opportunity provided for drug dealers and unsafe actions. We need to take a harder look at that. We also need to look at where we're zoning suboxin clinics and things of that nature. We need that in this city. We absolutely do. But at the same time, they have to be in safe areas, not in neighborhoods where there are a lot of children. So that's another zoning issue that we need to take a look at. And finally, what I'll say is, we need to bring back, again, I keep talking about mentorship in the school system. Mentorship, and we also need to bring back more of the education at the younger level on the issues with drugs and the safety with drugs. And we're talking elementary school because that's where it begins and that's what we need to do. So we can talk about, excuse me, if you're selling drugs, fentanyl, you're out of here, which is great, but that's rhetoric. The reality is that there are folks right now in this community who have trafficked fentanyl, who have been released by judges and they're back out into our streets right now. And that's a big problem, okay? And again, Canada Chase mentioned it and I agree with him. There's always so much we can do, right, as city councilors.
There's always so much we can do, right, as city councillors. Our job, often to share responsibility, is fiscally, through ordinances, we set the tax rate and we set our budget, okay? So what we can do is give up police officers, the men and women, those tools that they need to assist and to help those who may be in dire straits, but there's a couple of issues. I mean, and I know we're short on time. The closing of Taunton State Hospital, that was a huge blow to this community, when the Deval Patrick administration did that over nine years ago. That closed up hundreds of beds for folks in need. Where did they go? They flooded into New Bedford, into other gateway cities. And we didn't have the tools, we didn't have the resources to treat all of these folks. And I know I'm out of time, but this is such a convoluted, dovetailed, woven issue. We could talk until 11 o'clock tonight about it, there's so much more about it. A minute really isn't enough time, but I don't think it interests the time, we gotta pass it along. Thanks.
Okay, so drug addiction is rampant, opioids are rampant. How do we hold people accountable? You're right, we hold the drug companies accountable. There are many crack-stashing suits all over the United States that are going out to the drug companies. Treatment, where are we gonna put them for treatment? They've closed down all the facilities and took away the treatment. You're right, I mentioned that in another debate about Taunton State Hospital and all the other places that we had. They do not fund treatment anymore. What the legislators up there, the big guys in DC and in Nass, all they do is wanna hand you Narcan, here you go, that's to solve the problem. That doesn't solve the problem. We need treatment facilities, we need beds. So that way, somebody that wants help can actually go into a facility to get the help that they need, because there are so many people out there. I know every single one of us, every one of us, whether it's a child, whether it's a brother, mother, sister, aunt, uncle, best friend, knows somebody that's addicted to drugs, and it's not a pretty sight. I've seen it firsthand, I don't like it, we're there to help, but there's nothing when they stick them away. So what we need to do, and we need to enforce that, the laws need to be enforced. Those, they're right, they let them out of jail, it's a revolving door. And you talk about gun violence, most of them are drug dealers. And that's what's shooting, because they're shooting each other, trying to get it, because somebody's not paying for their drugs. That's where the violence has come from, the drug dealers, the drugs that are in this community. We need to rid them, and I know that the police force and the sheriff's department, the state police, they got a great task force, that they're doing undercover work. I know that for a fact, and they're out there. So just, you know, we just gotta give them the support that they need, keep our fingers crossed, fight that legislation, get money back to the communities for treatment and for our communities. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Definitely have to educate the children, that's the only way things are gonna turn around. And the community needs to work together. The only way we're gonna stop the flow of trafficking drugs into our community is if people in the community stand up, talk about, and share information with community leaders, police, narcotics. That's the only way. If you see something and don't say something, then you're part of the problem. You're letting things happen in the neighborhood, you're part of the problem. You need to be able to call the police and feel safe doing so. And I think that'd go a long way in curbing some of this, and not coddling people, and showing the children, the youth, exactly what an addiction looks like.
Yes, I believe that, again, whatever we can do with resources from all levels, the federal level, the state level, the city level. Do I have the answer for this? No, I don't. But it is concerning, it is alarming, you know, the addiction that takes place throughout Commonwealth. I see it every day in Boston, when I go down the, down by the hospital area in Boston. I just, I say, God, why, why? But we also need to address countries like China. We look about their trade, we wanna trade, but they need to stop pouring in the fentanyl and the other drugs. So it's a broad brush that we need. There are many other people who are much more educated and who can teach all of us on how we can try to cure this problem, and that's what I'm about. To get the best solution that we possibly can put together to address the concerns on both sides of the aisle of treatment, of addressing the concerns of the constituents that don't want these in their backyard. We need to help one another. By working together, I believe there is a prescription to fix this problem. Thank you.
Ninety-five percent of the addicts on heroin don't kick the habit. If you talk to an addict, I worked in, for High Point. I've seen addicts come right off the street, get sanctioned, and talk to them. Be the first person to talk to them. The first thing they talk about is childhood traumas, different things that they went through with mental health and what they went through when they were young. If you look at a lot of the addicts that we have on the streets now, and you talk to a lot of them, I guarantee you, a lot of them have childhood traumas that's happened to them and why they choose to do it. You don't know the pain that a lot of addicts go through, that they try to hide from the pain. Come from addiction, I have addiction in my family, I've seen it firsthand. You try to work with somebody and they can't get it, you try to work with somebody and you can't get it, but you don't give up on them, you keep on helping them, you keep on seeking help for them. Do we need more programs? We need more programs. We need more people to go into the halls. We need more people to understand that there is a chance for them, that there is support for them. I feel bad for the cops every day that have to deal with this. I feel bad for the EMTs that have to administer the Narcan to wake people up. I feel bad for kids that have to wake up in the morning and see their parents addicted to heroin. I feel bad for people that have to look at it every day on the streets and not come outside. It's a big problem, it's a community problem, it's an education problem, it's a mental health problem, it's family problems, and it's the lack of resources that they have. So we can't be all, we're gonna stop this, we're gonna do this. It's tough to stop, because once it's in your system, it's tough to stop. And it hurts to see family members hurt, and you can't do anything about it. We have to understand the importance of education, mental health, education. We have to find different resources. They're worried about putting a clinic on Rigger Street. That clinic was on Kempton Street, I don't think anybody would have a problem with it. We have to understand, we have to find a place that's big enough for them to hold that facility. But people need chances. And we all got a job because somebody gave us a shot. We all got to where we are because somebody gave us a chance. And I think with the education, with the police force, enhancing the laws, or just sticking by the rules, holding people accountable, and making sure that they don't make the same choices that other people make. Learn from people's mistakes, because them people on the street were once you. They were sitting in a school like you, they had parents like you, they had houses like you. One decision can change your whole life. Remember that.
So it's not all doom and gloom. I work in downtown New Bedford, and I represented this lady. I often see her standing there, I don't ask her why. But she came up to me and she said, Attorney LaRocque, you're the reason I'm clean today. And then a year later, when I saw her there, she came up to me and she said, I just got my CNA license. She was so happy, I said, that is wonderful. But unfortunately, those are few and far between. We have recovery courts in our district courts, where it takes at least 18 months to clear your mind from those cravings. So it takes a long time. We have, in the courts, parents or family members can section their loved ones to a 90-day program under 123, Section 35, where they're forced to go to detox. So there is reason to have hope. There's also reason to have hope with the DA, with all the dangerousness he's doing. Because he's putting fentanyl dealers and traffickers, not low-leverage drug dealers, traffickers in jail in Holydham for at least six months. That's where we need to start.
My approach to this is that if you're selling fentanyl or opioids, you need to go to jail. In the ward, I've been constantly flagging areas where drugs are being sold for Captain DeCosta and other members of our police department. I've also joined on with my fellow councillors, going after Big Pharma, and calling on the city and the state to go after Big Pharma for damages, a lawsuit for the habit that they've wreaked on our community. However, if you're addicted, I don't think going to jail is the way to go. I think we need to get you to treatment. And I've been working with Carl Alves, Pat, Reverend Eva, and Peter Muse from First Citizens to advance our ability to offer treatment in this community. I think we also need to change our culture around addiction. There should be less stigma, people should be able to talk about their problems with addiction, as everybody has a family member now. I think we also need to cast away the secret city mentality, and we need to really understand that, you know, when we're not calling out people who are selling drugs in our community, we're hurting our community. And this is why the New Bedford Police has endorsed me, because they know that I have the right approach when it comes to getting tough on opioids. Thank you.
There's really not much more to say. You know, I will completely agree with Mr. Baptiste has said. And, you know, mental health is very much tied in with addiction. And we don't do enough in our country, in our community, to deal with mental health problems. There are a lot of children who are now adults who had horrific childhoods, and they turn, unfortunately, to the drugs. I think education is very important. I think we need to start teaching our children that drugs are bad. And we shouldn't make it look like it's something great to do. I think we need to have more programs, and the program shouldn't be just one month or two weeks. An addict is not going to get clean in a month. We need programs that are gonna be six months to a year or more. And we need to help the families who have their family members who are addicts too, because they're going through a very emotional time. We need to support our police officers who are out there, day in and day out. We need to make sure that the judges do their work and do their job. But I think the main thing is, we need to do more when it comes to mental health. We really do, because that, I think, is really tied into a lot of the addiction that we are dealing with. So it's not an easy answer, and I don't think there's one answer. But as a community, we need to work together more on that. Thank you.
So first off, I wanna correct, Taunton State Hospital has not closed. It is a psychiatric hospital, and there is also the RAP program that houses the Women Recovery Addiction Program that is also state-operated. So I just wanted to put that correction out there, that Taunton State Hospital is not a closed facility. And second of all, I also would like to challenge everyone on this panel to do some work around the power of language. When we refer to people as addicts instead of a person with addiction, then that is a labeling and that's a judgment call. I would also challenge people to change the language around the word "clean", because when someone is clean, that means that before they were dirty, and they're not dirty. And I also echo Mr. Baptiste's comments regarding childhood trauma. And then when you look at the correlation of the adverse childhood experiences, the ACE study that came out of Kaiser Permanente out of California, and the correlation that goes with childhood trauma and substance use, as well as mental illness. And I could go on and on, because this is an area that I am very well-versed in. And it really does start with our children, with our families, with our communities, and building them up to be stronger and better.
I can't really go off on much more, everybody had some great ideas and great thoughts. But I'll just put a couple of things out there. I mean, some of the things, you're correct, put fentanyl dealers in jail. A lot of these things are above what the council can do. But as again, somebody had mentioned, everybody knows somebody who's had an addiction, and I've known a few. Unfortunately, some of them didn't make it, and I know the families are devastated, the families. One of them said, we're just waiting for that boot to drop, it's gonna be a terrible thing. And also, they said it would be more like an outreach with the families. Okay, you can bring them back with Narcan, you put them back on the streets, and they could, you know, again, relapse into Narcan. But everyone that I know who is, basically, I don't know if you ever get over this, but what they did say was they had a good support group. That's what got them to where they are today, sober, haven't done anything in a year's time. So I think what we can do as a council, I mean, we make sure our medical folks are funded, have the tools that they need, the walk-around, and maybe outreach to the families, in which I think we do that now anyway. So those are the type of things we could do, kind of on the grassroots level. And me as a council could just make sure the funding is there for our medical people.
Thank you so much. So that is the end of the form, I wanna make sure that we take a moment to show our gratitude and say thank you, with a round of applause for our speakers.